The clerk will call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum.
Counselor Arroyo.
Present.
Counselor Baker.
Here.
Counselor Siomo. Counselor Conley. Counselor Consalvo. Counselor Jackson. Counselor Lamatina.
Here.
Counselor Linehan. Counselor Murphy.
Here.
Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Presley. Counselor Roth. And Counsel Yancy. And Counselor Presley is present also. Thank you. We have everyone here.
I've been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. I'd ask all counselors and all guests to please rise at this time as I have the honor to introduce my colleague and friend, City Councilor Salvatore Lamatina, who is going to introduce Mary Jane Barber from Grace Federated Church in East Boston to deliver today's invocation. After today's invocation is delivered, we will remain standing as Counselor Lamatina will lead us in a salute to the flag. Counselor Sal Lamatina.
Good afternoon. It's a great pleasure for me to introduce Mary Jane Barber, a fellow Quontian in East Boston. Mary Jane is a Brighton resident. She is now the minister at the Grace Federation Church in East Boston, where she has preached there for six years. Previously, she was a minister in New Hampshire and Maryland. The Grace Federated Church operates an emergency food shelter pantry in East Boston that serves that community. Grace Federated is in assets for my neighborhood because some of the people have come to rely on the pantry to feed their families and as well as other other times going there for need when they have crises in their families. I should note that Ms. Barber, major in government at Albany State University, and she served as a page at the New York State Assembly for two sessions, 1972, 1973. She wasn't training to become a politician, but she's changed her mind and wants to serve the people. Yes, very, yes. And serve the people in the church. So it's my pleasure to welcome Mary Jane to the Boston City Council.
Let us pray. Almighty God, as we gather here to be about your work in Boston, keep us every mindful of your constant presence with us. Be with our mayor that his health may continue to improve as he leads us in these final months of service. Grant him many more opportunities to engage with and fight for the people of this city that he loves so much, that his many years of service might be just the start of what he has to offer. Be with our congressmen, councilmen, and women. Provide them with the insight needed to seek what is right rather than what is expedient. Guide them in all their endeavors that they might look for that which empowers all their constituents. Instill in them a humility that they might always put your will ahead of ego or personal gain as they strive for the betterment of those they have been given the privilege of serving. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Reverend Barber for your inspiring words. Please join Counselor Lamatina as we salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselor Lamatina will escort clergy from the podium. Here recognizes Counselor Mike Ross, who has a brief presentation. The beginning, we're going to come down front. We're going to move around a little bit here.
Mr. President, would you join me down here at the well?
We're going to post colors first.
Yeah. And if I could have, prior to posting colors for this very special presentation, if I could invite Bill, Senate Corporation Counsel, along with Frank Peterson, along with our Commissioner of Veteran Services, Commissioner Uriah?
Uraina.
Sorry, Commissioner. And Commissioner Uraina? At this point, we'd like to invite the color guard into the room. If everyone could stand, please. Arch on the colors. Thank you. This is Joe Conlin, Staff Sergeant Joe Conlin. We brought him back here to say thank you. We'd like to have Joe's fellow service members and friends to come join us up here. Dick Crawford, Roger Lockshear, Bill Blackenberry, Tom Cunningham, Paul Silver, and Paul's wife, Donna Silver. You could join us up here in the well. Come on right up. We'd like to have you. Dick, why don't you join us as well? With your companions there. Joe Conlin is from Mission Hill. And Joe Conlin served in the Vietnam conflict. Joe was part of an elite group of Green Berets, a Special Forces unit, that wasn't allowed to talk about what they could do, what they did, and what happened. While Joe was over there on the night of August 23rd, 1968, Joe and his unit came under enemy fire and were trapped in a building with a number of American soldiers. One of his fellow soldiers was injured in the initial assault. And Joe immediately administered first aid and actually threw his own body on top of the soldier, who was a medic, to protect him from a barrage of gunfire and explosion. And he was badly injured in that barrage. He then stabilized the wounded soldier. He secured the building from a possible attack and effectively prevented the attack of the forces from entering this building. With complete disregard for his own safety, Sergeant Conlin then exposed himself to direct enemy fire as he selfishly fought his way outside to rescue more wounded United States Army Special Forces soldiers. Due to this nature of what he did, this heroic act, again, he wasn't allowed to receive recognition or medals. He had to actually sign security documents with his fellow soldiers to act as if nothing happened and if it didn't exist. Over 30 years later, the information was declassified. And Joe was recommended and easily received the third highest commendation available to him, the Silver Star Medal. And he was given that last year. Joe had moved out of Mission Hill long ago. And he started his new life, by the way, after serving another 20 years after this conflict. He started his new life in New Hampshire. And when Joe found out he earned the Silver Star, we talked to him, he doesn't want any of this. His family urged him to try to do something to try to celebrate this milestone in his life. And so a group of them went down to the restaurant down the street from their house and had a very small, quiet celebration. We wanted to bring you home, Joe, to say thank you for your service to our country. You'll always be a Mission Hiller to the Mission Hillers in this room. You'll always be a Bostonian to the Bostonians in this room. We just wanted to say thank you for the service that you've given to our country. Thank you, Joe. Now, this wouldn't be a military event if we didn't have a couple other people that wanted to speak at it. And I want to bring them up here. But I want to first recognize, one guy talked to every single one of you to try to make this possible and went over to the mayor's office and did the same over there and called our color guard over and did all this possible. And it was Frank Peterson, who's originally from Mission Hill. So I just want to say thank you, Frank Peterson. An opportunity for Bill, Senate, and our Veterans Commissioner to just come up here and very brief remarks. Bill?
Thank you, Michael. And Joe, thank you for being here with us. It's a great thing to be in the company of heroes, not only yourself, but so many of your comrades from Special Forces Group and other veterans of many, many years. As Francisco will tell you, the mayor has scheduled an event in which he's personally going to thank you for your service. But I did have the occasion to speak with him recently. And I said, what do you want me to say to Joe Conlin? And he said, "Tell him we'll always be grateful and tell him we'll always consider him a Bostonian." And we will, Joe. So thank you for that. I also want to say how nice it is to be around a group of people that refer to other people that are in their 70s as good kids. And you Mission Hill guys, Chief Linsky has done a warrant check and some of you will not be leaving with the group. I give you a fair warning of that. But on a serious note, you know, those of us that have served in the military and served in the South, despite our best desire to avoid it, sometimes become country music fans. And there's a singer named Alan Jackson. And Alan Jackson sings a song that starts, "Where were you when the world stopped turning?" On that September morning. Song is about September 11th, 2001. And the song talks about how everyone's life changed in a second and how no one will forget that moment. Well, for Staff Sergeant Joe Conlin, the world stopped turning on August 23rd, 1968. And he will have vivid memories of that day, of his comrades, of the things that happened, of the 17 that did not come home forever. But it's also a day that all of us should focus on because by honoring heroes such as Joe Conlin, we honor all of our military personnel. And I think Joe would be the first to tell you that he's here to accept this award on behalf of so many others that can't accept it, that are not here to be in a position to accept it for the very heroic things that he did that day. So let's honor Joe, but let's also remember all of those others that can't be here and remember all of those that are serving in harm's way, that look to Joe and look to these hard men sitting up in the gallery as an example for service. So God bless you all and thank you.
Thank you, Bill. It has been said that for those who fight for it, life has a special meaning that protected would never know. And I am glad to be among our fellow veterans here. My name is Francisco Uraina and I represent Mayor Thomas Menino as the Commissioner of Veteran Services. And so today, to all those of you who have served, I say thank you for your service and welcome home. This marks the 50th anniversary, depending on when you started your clocks, of the start of the Vietnam War. For those of you who've participated in Vietnam, your welcome home perhaps was not as warm as the ones that we, the younger generation, received. And so today, I really like to tell you thank you for your service and welcome home, gentlemen and ladies who also participated in Vietnam. And may we not forget that their service to our country and what it means to serve this great nation, to volunteer or have participated in foreign lands and to return home to a nation that really cares for your service and really honors what you did. And so 45 years ago, actions that Joe Conlin took pardoned, therefore, the President of the United States of America, to all who shall see these presents, greetings. It is to certify that the President of the United States of America, by Act of Congress, July 9th, 1918, has awarded the Silver Star to Staff Sergeant Joe M. Conlin, 5th Special Forces Group Airborne, for gallantry in action. On August 23rd, 1968, to August 24th, 1968, during combat operations against armed enemy of the United States, as members of the Forward Operating Base Phu Bai, Command, Control, North Headquarters, 5th Special Forces Group Airborne, first Special Forces in the Republic of Vietnam during assault on the compound on which Staff Sergeant Conlin was located, enemy fire impacted the building where he was quartered. One of his fellow soldiers was injured in initial assault where Staff Sergeant Conlin immediately his own body at the explosion of a fireball attack and effectively prevented the attack forces from entering the building. With complete disregard to his own safety, Staff Sergeant Conlin exposed himself to direct enemy fire as he fought his way outside to rescue more wounded soldiers while delivering fire on the enemy. Throughout the night and into the next morning, he continued to engage the enemy and transported wounded soldiers in medical treatment while under constant enemy fire and dangerous conditions. His accurate and effective fire on the enemy saved countless of lives. Staff Sergeant Conlin's devotion to duty and personal bravery are in keeping with the finest traditions of the military and reflect great credit upon himself, the 5th Special Forces Group Airborne and the United States Army. And therefore, he was awarded Silver Star for bravery. Dick Crawford, a special comrade to Joe, will make a presentation this afternoon. And Dick, I'm going to ask you forward now at this time to make that presentation.
At Milak, to present this army. This is an army K-bar, not a Marine K-bar. Want to read what they said. "In appreciation for all your efforts, dedication, hard work, and financial support." We hope your ex-wife doesn't find out. On the mission mat. Phu Bai. Thanks a lot for all the help.
We also have a presentation from Tom Cunningham, who's one of the men who served over there with Joe.
Well, in addition to his actual military service, Joe has been very active in a veterans organization called Special Operations Association, of which I am also a member. And on behalf of the SOA and the President of the SOA, it is my privilege to present you with a plaque honoring both your military service and your commitment to the goals and objectives of the Special Operations Association. And I'd like to read this for a moment. It's presented to Joseph M. Conlin, SOA Number 1833 GL, who as a Green Beret in Vietnam saved the lives of untold fellow soldiers, who has continued serving less fortunate teammates through his financial support of the SOA, Bright Light, and scholarship programs. His devotion to our men is hereby greatly acknowledged by the SOA Board of Directors, 10 April, 2003. And I'm not going to read the lengthy letter that the SOA President also authored for you, that he presents that to you as well.
Thank you.
And thank you for your ongoing support of the SOA community.
Joe, we're about to take a picture, but before we do, we wanted to, you can absolutely have a seat. We just wanted to see if you had anything you'd like to say. We'd welcome your remarks, if any.
Well, it's I'm going to go around the room a little bit. This young man here is Bill Blackenberg, one of my closest friends. A career Army NCO, senior NCO. Holder of Silver Star and a Bronze Star for valor. This is Paul and Donna Silva. I met Paul one day in the Officers Club in Saigon when I had gone back on my second tour. And because I had my beret on, Paul come over and says, "You're in Special Forces?" I did ask. He said, "Well, I'm going to Special Forces." And I said, "Well, you just don't go. You have to test. You have to be cleared. You have to go through training. You have to go through the Q course. Oh." I get to my camp a couple of days later and there's Paul standing there. Now, the funny thing about, not funny, but the beautiful thing about Paul and Donna is Donna was an Army nurse and is a Vietnam Combat Veteran. If you ever gotten to think of I almost said it. If you ever gotten to think of it and you wound up, the first person you usually saw was an angel, an Odie Green. They were just like the movie nurses. They could take the pain away from you, make you comfortable, and they risked their own lives. So that's Donna and Paul. Paul is also a recipient of three Silver Stars. He got three Bronze Stars. Dick Crawford and I, a Kason Rats, so to speak. Kason was a big Marine base. And we had an FOB at that base. So there's an association called the Kason Rats. Although not, they do have an official organization, although I don't think either one of us are joined officially. We still can look down on noses at the other FOBs. We were Kason Rats. Crawford may not remember, but when I got put into Laos on my first trip, Charlie shot down a helicopter gunship. We didn't quite sneak into his backyard, but we got into his backyard. Crawford took care of those men, got them out of there at the risk of his life. He had a great risk of what he did. Tom Cunningham was at the same, let's call it, unit. We were both in what was called CCN. He was at a camp called Phu Bai. I was at Milak, the launch site, which was you'd go up to the launch site, rehearse for a couple of days, and then get launched into Laos. When we went into Laos, we didn't just go across the street. We went deep into his backyard. We played poker, watched movies. And sometimes we ate the beer, sometimes the beer ate us. But, you know, it all evens out in the long run. Just look at his awards and decorations. It's not, they're not giving away I remember when I went to Marine Corps, I had two drill instructors that were Korean War vets. And they were two of the hottest, ugliest men I've ever seen in my life. But you always seem to have in the back of your brain that if you pay a little bit of attention to these guys, they had sufficient, I didn't know what they were then, but they had sufficient decorations to warrant being entrusted to be a drill instructor in the Marine Corps and to teach guys like me what it's like to be a Marine and how proud you should carry that through your life. I got a little bit of, a little bit up the Army chain. And a lot of that comes to what I learned in the Marine Corps. It was It was, whatever you do, you have to stand up and own up to it, have to be proud of it. And you have to, if you did wrong, you have to take the whack for it. There's another gentleman, I like to think that's not here. His name is Bill Nelson. He's a Democratic Senator from Florida. He took on this job of seeing people that deserved awards and recognition, got it. The Army wasn't real crazy about it. Even Special Forces wasn't real crazy about it. The active-duty soldier comes first, always. But he made sure that they'd go back and, you know, give the justice deserves to the people that deserve it. He worked hard, he spent untold hours. I don't know how many miles Dick has put on that car of his. But he was back and forth from his house in North Carolina to Florida, to Fort Knox, Kentucky, to God knows where and when. And there are a lot of people, I know some of you that were in the service but didn't get to Vietnam, thank God. But what the people today, I don't think really realizes when a guy goes off on a one-year tour, he misses a lot of birthdays. Christmas, New Years, school graduations, school plays. This whole Where's Chris yet? This is my daughter, Chris. I think the first six years that I was married, I was home maybe two. I was fortunate enough to marry to a wonderful woman and two great-grandparents that they took over, stepped in, filled the void that I had left. Fortunately, he was a career Army officer, so it was kind of keeping it in the family. Now, I've got those three kids you see standing over there. That's the shoemaker triplets. I guess you can say when the Conlin do something, they do it right. I want to thank everybody. Everybody from the city, the police officers, all of you here, the color guy there. It means a lot. Because as one of the gentlemen said, 17 Americans were killed that night. 17 Special Forces soldiers were killed that night. Something like this gives me the opportunity to remember them again. One of the things I do every 23rd of August when I go to the pub is I get a Guinness and a double shot of Jameson, and I set it up on the bar, and nobody touches it. It stays there till I leave. And when I leave, I drink it for them. I'm gonna do that tonight, too. For a couple of reasons. But thank all of you for coming and taking time out of your day and what you might have had planned, and you made the sacrifice to come here. It means so much to me and my friends. And we will talk about it back in Vegas this coming October at the reunion. I'm going to the pub when I get home, and you can bet your bottom dollar that I'll talk about it there. I hope my grandkids remember it, and I know my daughter will. So, thank you very much.
Take a photo. If I got my colleagues to join us. Can we also have the Lord Mayor of Richard Gormley, also a veteran? Could you come down, Richard? I'd like to have you down here.
Thank you very much for your service.
Where is Frank? Frank Peterson. See you around?
Right.
Yeah, Frank, come on down with us for the photo.
It's fine.
You got it? Just kind of turn and face right over there.
Well, I can stand up.
Okay, would you rather stand with him?
Sitting aside.
Okay.
How are your grandkids?
Kids are all right.
I think I should be proud.
Chris? Oh, can you get in?
Yeah.
Give me those books.
I love a duck. Thank you.
Thanks for coming. I pretty did.
Here at the City Council. And congratulations to him, his friends, and his family. A great day for Mission Hill, a great day for the City of Boston, and a great day for the Conlin family. Thank you very much, everyone.
I didn't
Council will be back in session. If there are no corrections to be made, the minutes from last week's meeting will stand approved, seeing and hearing. No corrections, the minutes are so approved. Madam Clerk, communications from his honor, the mayor.
Docket number 0610, Message and Order for Annual Appropriation and Tax Order for FY 2014, filed in the office of the City Clerk on April 8th, 2013.
Docket 0610 will refer to the Committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 0611, Message and Order for Annual Appropriation for the School Department for FY 2014, filed in the office of the City Clerk on April 8th, 2013.
Docket 0611 will be referred to the Committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 0612, Message and Order Approving and Appropriation for $40 million to the Other Post-Employment Benefits, known as OPEB, Liability Trust Fund, established under Section 20 of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 32B, filed in the office of the City Clerk on April 8th, 2013.
Docket 0612 will be referred to the Committee on Ways and Means.
Message and Order for a Loan of $39,470,000 for acquiring land or interest in land for any purpose which the city is or may hereafter be authorized to acquire, land or interest therein, and for the construction of buildings and the addition to such buildings where such additions increases the floor space of said buildings, including the cost of original equipment and furnishings of said buildings, and additions and/or for remodeling, reconstruction, or making extraordinary repairs to public buildings owned by the city, including the original equipment and landscaping, paving, and other site improvements incidental or directly related to such remodeling, reconstruction, or repair, and/or for the purpose of city departments, including the School Department, filed in the office of the City Clerk on April 8th, 2013.
Docket 0613 will be referred to Committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 0614, Message and Order Amending an Appropriation Order that would raise the amount from $22,650,000 to $29,850,000 for the purpose of closing out a landfill area, opening a new landfill area, or making improvements to an existing landfill area, and/or for the construction of municipal outdoor recreational or athletic facilities, including the acquisition and development of land and the construction and reconstruction of facilities for the purpose of city departments, including the reconstruction of facilities for the purpose of city departments of the Parks and Recreation and Public Works Department, filed in the office of the City Clerk on April 8th, 2013.
Docket 0614 will be referred to the Committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 0615, Message and Order Authorizing the City to Enter into one or more lease or leasing purchase or installment sales agreement in 2014 in an amount not to exceed $26,200,000, and in fiscal year 2015 in an amount not to exceed $26,200,000 for various city departments for the acquisition of equipment and furtherance of their respective governmental functions, filed in the office of the City Clerk on April 8th, 2013.
Docket 0615 will be referred to the Committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 0616, Message and Order for a Loan of $23,460,000 for acquiring land or interest in land for any purchase purpose which the city is or may thereafter be authorized to acquire, land or interest therein, and for the construction of buildings or in addition to such buildings where such addition increases the floor space of said building, including the cost of original equipment and furnishing of said buildings, and addition and for remodeling, reconstructing, or making extraordinary repairs to public buildings owned by the city, including original equipment and landscaping, paving, and other site improvements incidental or directly related to such remodeling, reconstruction, or repair for the purpose of city departments, including the Boston Center for Youth and Families, Fire, Library, Parks and Recreation, Police, Property and Construction Management, Public Health Commission, and Public Works Department, filed in the office of the City Clerk on April 8th, 2013.
Docket 0616 will be referred to the Committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 0617, Message and Order for a, I'm sorry, Message and Order for a Loan of $22,625,000 for the original construction of public waves or the extension of widening thereof, including land damages and cost of pavement and sidewalks laid at the time of said construction, or for the construction of stone, block, brick, cement, concrete, bituminous concrete, bituminous macadam, and other permanent paving of similar loss and character, or for the original construction, surfacing, or resurfacing of municipally-owned and operated off-street parking areas, and/or for the construction of sidewalks of brick, bituminous concrete, stone and concrete, installing macadam pavement or other road materials for resurfing for resurfing municipalities owned and operated off-street parking areas with pavement or other road materials, and/or for the construction of walls or dikes for the protection of highways of property, and for traffic signals or public lighting installations, and for the purpose of extending and improving such installations, and/or for the cost of engineering or architectural services for plans and specifications for the purpose of the Boston Redevelopment Authority and for city departments, including the Property and Construction Management, Public Works, and Transportation Departments, filed in the office of the City Clerk on April 8th, 2013.
Docket 0617 will be referred to the Committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 0618, Message and Order for a Loan of $19,785,000 for the construction and municipal outdoor recreational and athletic facilities, including the acquisition and development of land and the construction and reconstruction of facilities, and/or for the cost of cleaning up or preventing pollution caused by existing or closed municipal facilities, landfills, or other solid waste disposable facilities, and/or for the cost of engineering or architectural services for plans and specifications, and for the developing land for burial purposes and for constructing paths and avenues and embellishing the grounds in city-owned cemeteries for the purpose of the Boston Redevelopment Authority and city departments, including the Parks and Recreation Department and School Department, filed in the office of the City Clerk on April 8th, 2013.
Docket 0618 will be referred to the Committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 0619, Message and Order for a Loan of $17,140,000 for remodeling, reconstructing, or making extraordinary repairs to public buildings owned by the city, including original equipment, furnishing, and landscaping, paving, and other site improvements incidental or directly related to such remodeling, reconstruction, or repairs, and/or for energy conservation, alternative energy, or renewable energy improvements to public buildings and facilities, and/or for the cost of departmental equipment, and/or for the cost of departmental installation of safety alarm systems, including and extending and improving such installations for the purpose of city departments, including the School Department, filed in the office of the City Clerk on April 8th, 2013.
Docket 0619 will be referred to the Committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 0620, Message and Order for a Loan of $15,855,000 for the purposes of constructing or reconstructing bridges of stone or of iron superstructure, and/or for the cost of engineering or architectural services for plans and specifications for the purpose of city departments, including the Public Works Department, filed in the office of the City Clerk on April 8th, 2013.
Docket 0620 will be referred to the Committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 0621, Message and Order for a Loan of $15,150,000 for remodeling, reconstructing, or making extraordinary repairs to public buildings owned by the city, including original equipment and landscaping, paving, and other site improvements incidental or directly related to such remodeling, reconstruction, or repair, and/or for energy conservation, alternative energy, or renewable energy improvements to public buildings or facilities, and/or for the cost of departmental equipment, and/or for the department design, purchase, and installation of computer hardware, other data-driven processing equipment, and computer assisted integrated financial management and accounting systems, and/or for the development, design, and purchase of computer software incident to the purchase installation or operation of computer hardware, other data processing equipment, and computer-assisted integrated financial management and accounting systems for the purpose of the city department, including the School Department, filed in the office of the City Clerk on April 8th, 2013.
Docket 0621 will be referred to the Committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 0622, Message and Order for a Loan of $14,745,000 for remodeling, reconstructing, or making extraordinary repairs to public buildings owned by the city, including original equipment, furnishing, and landscaping, paving, and other site improvements incidental or directly related to such remodeling, reconstruction, or repairs, and/or for energy conservation, alternative energy, or renewable energy improvements to public buildings and facilities, and/or to public buildings and facilities, and/or for the cost of departmental equipment, and/or for the cost of installation of safety alarm systems, including extending and improving such installations for the purpose of city departments, including the library department, filed in the office of the city clerk on April 8, 2013.
Docket 0622 will be referred to committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 0623, message in order for a loan of $12,240,000 for the development, design, purchase, and installation of computer hardware, other data processing equipment, and computer-assisted integrated financial management and accounting systems, and/or for the development, design, and purchase of computer software incidental to the purchase, installation, or operation of computer hardware, other data processing equipment, and computer-assisted integrated financial management and accounting systems, and/or for the cost of departmental equipment, and/or for fire alarm or police communication installations for the purpose of extending and improving such installations for the purpose of city departments, including the school department and the Department of Innovation and Technology, filed in the office of the city clerk on April 8, 2013.
Docket 0623 will be referred to the committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 0624, message in order for a loan of $4,695,000 for the cost of departmental equipment and/or for traffic signals or public lighting installations, and for the purpose of extending and improving such installations, and/or for the cost of engineering of architectural services for plans and specifications for the purpose of city departments, including the Public Works and Transportation Department, filed in the office of the city clerk on April 8, 2013.
Docket 0624 will be referred to the committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 0625, message in order for a loan of $3,535,000 for the cost of departmental equipment for the purpose of the city departments, including the Fire and Parks and Recreation Department, filed in the office of the city clerk on April 8, 2013.
Docket 0625 will be referred to committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 0626, message in order for a loan of $1,610,000 for the Surplus Property Disposition Fund, credited to the Capital Fund for the Environmental Remediation and Demolition of Area, I'm sorry, of former Area B2 Police Station in Dudley Square for the purposes of Property and Construction Management Department, filed in the office of the city clerk on April 8, 2013.
Docket 0626 will be referred to committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 0627, message in order for a loan of $1,010,000 for the financing of various capital projects for the purposes of the Boston Center for Youth and Families, filed in the office of the city clerk on April 8, 2013.
Docket 0627 will be referred to the committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 0628, message in order for a loan of $710,000 for the purpose of planting shade trees.
Thousand.
That, what did I say?
Billion.
Million. Okay, well, we need more trees. No. I'll begin again. Docket number 0628, message in order for the loan, I'm so sorry, of $710,000 for the purpose of planting shade trees, planting, designing, acquiring land for constructing and originally equipping structures and facilities. It is authorized to construct and for remodeling and reconstructing of making major alterations, additions, and repairs to existing facilities, including original equipment and landscaping, paving, and other site improvements incidental or directly related to such remodeling, reconstruction, or repair for the purpose of city departments, including the Department of Parks and Recreation, filed in the office of the city clerk on April 8, 2013.
Docket 0628 will be referred to the committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 0629, message in order for $205,000 for acquiring land or interest in land for any purpose for which the city is or may therein be authorized to acquire land or interest therein, and for the construction of buildings or in addition to the buildings, where such addition increases the floor space of said buildings, including the cost of original equipment and furnishing of said buildings, and addition for the purpose of city departments, including the Property and Construction Management Department, filed in the office of the city clerk on April 8, 2013.
Docket 0629 will be referred to committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 0630, message in order for a loan of $205,000 in aid of the Economic Development and Industrial Corporation for the Boston Redevelopment Authority, filed in the office of the city clerk on April 8, 2013.
Docket 0630 will be referred to committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 0631, message in order authorizing Mayor's Office of Arts, Tourism, and Special Events to accept and expand a grant of $133,320 from the Massachusetts Cultural Council to support year-end cultural programming agendas of Boston's cultural and educational organizations.
Docket 0631 will be referred to committee on Ways and Means. Reports of public, or Chair recognizes Counsel Charles Yancey.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I just wanted to comment on the budget sum bill we received earlier this morning and in today's package. First of all, I want to thank the administration and his team. They worked very, very hard and came up with a very comprehensive budget, as they do every year, and it does take a great deal of effort. Mr. President, I believe the budget from a very preliminary view appears to be very reasonable and responsible. We're not talking about closing of schools or community centers. As you know, in the past, we've had to deal with that, especially libraries. But as I said during this morning's breakfast, Mr. President, it probably deserves a little bit of tweaking. This proposal does not include funding in the capital budget for a new high school, which the administration knows that we need. It does not call for increasing of staffing in the small business, small local business enterprise office, which the administration and all of us on the city council knows that we have to do if we're going to be serious about compliance issues with regards to contracts for various projects that are enunciated in this package. And I would propose, Mr. President, that this body not approve the capital budget until we have the capacity to monitor those projects. And to have three staffers monitor the number of projects that we have ongoing today in addition to what's being proposed is totally unrealistic. So I would ask the administration to reconsider, significantly increase the number of compliance offices in that small department. And also, remember that we have 4,000, according to the school department, we have 4,000 Boston Public High School students of the roughly 18,000 high school students attending substandard facilities for their high school education. So I ask that the administration reconsider and ask that this body take action to make sure that along last, we build Boston's first new high school since 1979. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Yancey. Chair recognizes Counsel Moxiomo.
Reconsideration of docket number 0631 for reassignment.
Counsel Siomo moves reconsideration of docket 0631 for reassignment. It was assigned incorrectly to Ways and Means. Needs a second, second matter. Docket 0631 will be assigned to committee on Arts, Tourism, and Humanities. Thank you, Counsel Siomo. Reports of public officers and others.
Docket number 0632, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Ellen E. Rooney as a member of the Election Commission for term expiring March 31, 2017.
Docket 0632 will be placed on file.
Docket number 0633, communication was received from Joanne P. Massaro, interim commissioner of Public Works Department, transmitting the 2013 annual report regarding access to city recycling programs for large residential buildings.
Docket 0633 will be placed on file.
Docket number 0634, communication was received from Counsel Bill Linehan, Chair of Economic Development and Planning, regarding docket number 0109 and docket number 0111.
Docket 0634 will be placed on file. Reports of committees.
Docket number 0499, the Committee on Ways and Means, to which was referred on March 27, 2013, docket number 0499, message in order to reduce the appropriation for the reserve for collective bargaining by $396,055,000 to provide funding for the Boston Public Health Commission, BPHC, for the FY13 salary increases contained within the collective bargaining agreement between the Boston Public Health Commission and the American Federation of State, States, County, and Municipal Employees, known as AFSMI, Council 93, Local 787, as well as the cost of salary increases for non-union BPHC employees. Submit a report recommending the order ought to pass.
Can you also read docket 0500 before the chair speaks?
Thank you. Docket number 0500, the Committee on Ways and Means, to which was referred on March 27, 2013, docket number 0500, message in order approving supplemental appropriations of $396,055,000 for the Boston Public Health Commission for FY13 to cover cost items contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the Boston Health Commission, BPHC, and the American Federation of States, County, and Municipal Employees, AFSMI, Local 93, I'm sorry, Council 93, Local 787, as well as the cost of salary increases for non-union BPH employees. Submit a report recommending the order ought to pass.
Speaking on docket 0499 and 0500, Chair recognizes Counsel Moxiomo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move passage of the said dockets. We held a hearing last Thursday, April 4. David Sussich, the Chief of Labor and Employment Council, and Meredith Winnick provided testimony. There are 56 folks in the bargaining unit for the Public Health Commission, which consists of campus police, as well as some EMS fleet and supply employees, health inspectors, and property management folks. This appropriation will be taken from the FY13 Collective Bargaining Reserve, which will leave a balance of $17,000,032. AFSMI was also a union that took the wage delay, so there'll be a lump sum taken from the FY11 Collective Bargaining Reserve in the amount of $44,834. I ask my colleagues to pass this. Thank you.
Counsel Siomo, this time moves passage of docket 0499 and 0500. All those in favor of passage signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say nay. Docket 0499 and 0500 have passed. Matters recently heard for possible action.
Docket number 0310, message in order approving the redevelopment of the North Hampton Square campus in the south end with the first phase of development.
Chair recognizes Counsel Bill Linehan on docket 0310.
Thank you, Mr. President. We held a hearing earlier this week on Monday. It was a very informative hearing. We had the Public Health Commission and Trinity Development Corp. here. I want to thank my good colleagues, Counsel Baker and Yancey, and we vetted, we had a very thorough vetting of the issue based on the questions that were asked and the information that was provided. This is North Hampton Square redevelopment, Phase 1. It's in the western part of my district, right down off of Mass Ave and Albany Street. And it has a tower, Phase 1 includes this tower, which has over 240 units. And as part of this $55 million development and renovation of the site, the 245 units will remain the affordable units. They'll be completely renovated, and there'll be no displacement of the residents who live there. There's been some creative moves here to create the financing that would allow this project to remain affordable. And in that, one of it is the conveyance and creation of this property, the entire site, to a condominium status, a commercial condominium status, which would be controlled by a nonprofit that the Board of Directors would be selected by the Public Facilities Commission. And in this project, the complete renovation occurs in a million-dollar lease with Trinity. They will pay a million dollars annually, and they have a 99-year lease, and they will do the $55 million renovation. There's a lot of nuances around tax credits and grants, both from the state and the city to retain this affordability. But this seems like a very important project. It's a very creative manner in which they develop this project so that we can retain these 244 units. And I ask my colleagues to pass this matter on the floor today. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Linehan. Chair recognizes Counsel Charles Yancey.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'm very excited about this project. I thought that the presenters did an excellent job during the hearing. I do have a few questions that they provide, that they promised to respond to concerning the generation of revenue and expenditures in the past, as well as what they project for the future. Trinity has done a great job in my district with regards to numerous projects, including the Foley Building, which is very similar to what we're facing today. Just to refresh your memory, Mr. President, back in 19, and to refresh the clerk's memory, in 1995, we implemented the Boston Public Health Act, which resulted in the merging, some say, I say, takeover of the Boston City Hospital by Boston University Medical Center. But part of that deal involved the Foley Building and other properties on River Street and Matter Pan. After that deal went through, the hospital ceased this operation on that particular campus, and it was available for redevelopment. Trinity was one of a number of organizations bidding for rights to develop the property, and they were successful, and I enthusiastically supported that. And I've never regretted it because they did a fantastic job on that campus. The plan we're discussing this afternoon has to do with the redevelopment of other property now controlled by the Boston Public Health Commission. And the primary property on that site was known as the Nurses Building, which I watched get constructed in the late '60s and early '70s. But it's woefully inadequate to deal with the disabled, and it's in need of serious redevelopment. I believe that this is a reasonable deal, although I still await the financial information that was promised. I have no problems with this going through today. I take the principles that they were, that they will provide that information to us, and they have to come back for subsequent posses, which have to be developed as well. So I support the chair's motion at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Yancey. Chair recognizes Counsel Tito Jackson.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I actually also support this very important project that's going to happen right in the middle of my district. I'm actually very excited by what's happened in that corner. This building actually has elevators that don't particularly stop on every floor, which is an issue relative to accessibility. It's one that has been in disrepair for a long time. But I'm also, it's great what's happening in that area based on the fact that Blanchards, which was a large liquor store, is now gone, and there's a CVS. In addition, Lion de Judah Church in that area actually is putting up a large facility and expanding in that area. So there's a zone in that area that is now very different than what we've seen at the corner of Mass Ave and Harrison. And this is the city stepping up and doing exactly what it should do to make sure that we keep affordable housing online, and also to make sure that we take care of these buildings and bring them up to standard. So I will be supporting this today. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Jackson. Counsel Linehan, at this time, moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0310. All those in favor, say aye. Or is no. The ayes have it. The ayes have it. Docket 0310 has passed. Madam Clerk, docket 0340.
Docket 0340, message in ordinance amending the City of Boston's Code, Chapter 7, Section 7-2 of the City of Boston Code Air Pollution Control Commission. The proposed amendment to Section 7-2 will require property owners and tenants to report annual energy use data to the Air Pollution Control Commission, and require the commission to establish the procedures and mechanisms necessary for such reporting to enforce this requirement through fines and to disclose reported data to the public.
Chair recognizes Council Matt O'Malley on docket 0340.
Thank you, Mr. President. And just for sort of background for folks, this is the Energy Disclosure Ordinance. Last Thursday, April 4, we held a hearing. It was the day that many of us, I think all of us, wanted to be with our mayor over at Fanal Hall. So we had a two-hour hearing that consisted of seven different panels and more than 40 people testified. And thank you all for your patience in getting through it. Following that hearing, we held a working session yesterday, April 9, which was very, very productive, I believe. This is an ordinance, I've said publicly, I've said privately, that I very much support. I do understand there's some concern, particularly with some industry folks, and I'm hopeful that we could have used yesterday's working session and one additional working session that we will be holding to try to find some more common ground. There are many parts of this ordinance, which I believe there's some room for agreement and consensus, like the fee structure, compliance timeframe, perhaps even the square footage requirements. This is a very good bill, and I think Mayor Minio should be commended for his forward thinking on this initiative. I also realize that this is a controversial bill. I know many of you have heard from some of your constituents with some concerns. There was a lot of, I think, incorrect information which originally came out, which we've been able to correct the record, so to speak. But this is something that we will be voting on. We have, by necessity of its timeframe, the vote would occur at the final meeting of this month, which would be April 24. I would like to do one more working session before that, likely the 22nd or the 23rd. If we cannot find consensus, obviously, I would reject without prejudice. But we will be voting on this in relatively short order, either the end of this month or at some point next month. At our hearing, most of you came, and I appreciate your questions and your interest. We had a great working session with Council Siomo yesterday. I would just urge you, and many of you, and staff as well, to participate and to observe. When we finalize the day for the final working session, I would just ask you to come and answer any questions. Brian Swett has been tremendous to work with on this and try to answer any questions or thoughts or concerns or misconceptions that are out there. So once we have that working session scheduled, again, it would likely be the 22nd or the 23rd of April. I'll let all of your offices know and look forward to continuing this discussion. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council O'Malley, for that report. Docket 0340 will remain in the Committee on Government Operations. motions, orders, and resolutions.
Docket number 0635, Council Jackson offered the following order for hearing regarding the simulcast of the Boston City Council meetings in additional languages other than English.
Chair recognizes Council Tito Jackson on docket 0635.
Mr. President, I put this forth so that the members of the City of Boston would have an opportunity to hear our voice, that they have a full opportunity to participate in the very important work that we do here. I won't get into the minutia of technology, but what this essentially would do would be to give an opportunity, in particular, in the three largest languages that we have in the City of Boston, Spanish, Haitian Creole, and Chinese, to have a simulcast of the Boston City Council meetings while we are deliberating on, you know, our $2.6 billion budget, as well as the many things that occur. And, you know, interesting statistic, ELL students in the City of Boston and the Boston Public Schools speak more than 85 different languages and come from over 100 countries. Again, we are strongest when we have the most people involved in our democracy, and it makes it almost impossible for many folks to be involved in this democracy when 19% of the people in the City of Boston speak one of those three languages, and we are not speaking to them in their own tongue. So I look forward to a hearing on this and look forward to having this discussion and making sure that we continue to bring more people to the table to be part of our deliberations. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Jackson. Chair recognizes Council Charles Yancy.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I rise to commend the maker. I think it's very, very important that our proceedings are accessible to as many people as possible in the City of Boston. And yes, we'd like to remind our colleagues that we do have a pending order, hearing order, to look at expanding the hours of viewing for the Boston City Council hearings. As you know, Mr. President, these proceedings are not shown in evenings or on weekends, whereas even the school committee is shown on weekends. So I think it's important to expand those hours. I agree 100% with a good colleague, who incidentally will celebrate a birthday tomorrow. Happy birthday, Council Jackson. I would like to have my name added. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Council Yancy. Chair recognizes Council Matt O'Malley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Very briefly, happy birthday, Council Jackson. I rise to commend the maker and, you know, really highlight our great central staff, and Carrie Jordan particularly, who does such a great job making sure that these programs run, both online and on TV. I think this is a fabulous idea. It's great to really reach out. There is a viewership out there. My mother is watching as we speak. Hi, Mom. And people I know that will stop me, you know, in the course of being out in the district that will have really detailed questions. They watch this. It's a great way just to get our message out there, focus on the good work we're doing, and make sure that more people can participate in this process. So I have to add my name and thank the maker.
Please add the name of Council Matt O'Malley to that order. And that matter, oh, Chair recognizes, also add the name of Council Charles Yancy. Council Felix Arroyo. Chair recognizes Council Felix Arroyo.
Gracias, Presidente. Wanted to commend the author. I don't speak about it often, but I actually, you know, my first day in school, I didn't speak any English. And I know what it's like to have a language around you, and you don't understand it. And if you can believe it or not, I was an introvert then, because I had no way of communicating with people. Maybe that explains why I communicate so much now. But I would like to thank the author for doing this because, you know, this government, this city, and this, what we do here as counselors and what we do here, it really does belong to everybody. And the only way to make sure that everyone who lives in the city knows that we care about them, that we belong to them, is to speak to them in a way that they understand, and to communicate with them in a way that they understand. And so myself, as an ESL student, I thank you for this, Counselor, and I'm happy to sign on.
Thank you, Council Arroyo. Please add the name of Council Felix Arroyo. Also add the names of Council Diana Presley, Council Michael Ross, Council John Connolly. On that matter, will be referred to the Committee on Global Opportunities, Innovation, and Technology. Thank you.
Docket number 0636, Council Murphy offered the following order for hearing regarding higher education options for all Boston residents.
Chair recognizes President Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I offered this order because, as we look at the demographics of Boston, we find that we are home to 60 higher education institutions serving 250,000-plus students on a yearly basis. Now, these students and potential students make up a very diverse population. Many of them are English-language learners or professionals going back to school, students who, for one reason or another, delayed high school graduation, or they're the first in their family to attend higher education, college. Boston residents should be made aware of every option that they have when they decide to continue their education. And it's important to know which academic degrees are available to them right here in the city. How affordable are those degrees? Do classes adjust to English as a second-language curriculum? This is what's the heart of what we're getting at in this order, to try to educate our own young people about options that are affordable to them and available to them within the borders of our city moving forward. So I ask my colleagues for an assignment to the appropriate committee, and for many of them to join me in this exploratory effort. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Council Presley.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. And we should commend the maker. I filed a similar hearing order in January to assess the state of adult education in Boston. That hearing will be happening imminently. But I do appreciate this particular angle being offered and would again just underscore for our viewing audience that the best gift that we can give a child, we have so much emphasis on the development and stabilization of our young people, but the best gift we can give a child, a young person, is a stable adult. And the way in which we stabilize their homes is to make sure that adults who, because life gets in the way, may not be in the best position. And this waitlist continues to grow. Currently, just to give you some numbers, we're only meeting 6.9% of the need. And those waitlists continue to grow for both adult basic education and ESOL. That's to the tune, that means that there are 83,000 people in need, and currently, only 5,100 of them are being served. You may recall, there were specific programs last year. I joined a number of people in fighting to save them in Charlestown, in Mattapan, and also in Roxbury. So I commend the maker. I appreciate your vantage point on this. I was hoping you might be trying to put some pilot angle in here. So maybe that will be coming, because you've done great stewardship on that. But I wish to have my name added. And again, I commend the maker. Thank you.
Thank you. Please add a Council Presley. Chair recognizes Council Yancy.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice President. I commend the President for offering this. And to relay, as recently as last evening, Mr. Vice President, we learned that there are a lot of young people in the City of Boston, including in the Boston Public Schools, who are still not aware of the tremendous opportunities there are right here in the City of Boston to further their education. So I happen to agree with the President that this is an issue that we should explore. We should encourage college tours locally, as well as tours visiting institutions outside of the state. And I believe it's essential that we do what we can to make sure families have as much information as possible as we look towards higher education and after our children successfully graduate from the Boston Public School system. So I'd like to have my name added and commend the maker. Thank you.
Thank you. Please add the name of Council Charles Yancy. Chair recognizes Council Bill Linehan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise in support and would like to have my name added as someone who has graduated college at 36 years old and as a political science major. I ran for office before I got my degree. Yeah, it's really important to let folks know that you should never give up that dream, that you really need to continue to educate. And I even tell young people today who have taken maybe a year of college, and they're 25, and they say, "I missed that opportunity." I said, "From my perspective, you've got 11 years before you reach 36. So you have plenty of time to graduate." And this program, or looking into this potential is really important for our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Please add the name of Council Bill Linehan. Chair recognizes Council Tito Jackson.
Mr. President, I thank your leadership on this matter. In the state of Massachusetts, we have 125,000 open jobs, and we have 250,000 people without work. What you're speaking about is right on. When it comes down to this issue of matching people's skill sets and needs with the workforce, I think that's very important. And I also think, and it was brought up a little bit earlier, we need to not forget that college tours and advice about college, as well as other training, needs to actually occur right here in Boston. Uniquely, Boston, actually the state of Massachusetts, educates more people in private institutions than in public institutions. So therefore, we actually oftentimes, from a public setting, may be forgetting to make this connection. So I think it's very important that we are deliberate in making this connection. And I thank you for your leadership, and I'd like to have my name added.
Please add the name of Council Tito Jackson. Please also add the name of Council Salvatore Lamatina, Council Matt O'Malley, Council Frank Baker, Council Felix Arroyo. On that matter, docket 0... Council Mike Ross, please add Council Ross's name. Docket 0636 will be referred to Committee on Education. Personnel orders.
Docket 0637, Council Murphy for Council Arroyo...
Council Arroyo moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0637. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Docket 0637 has passed.
Docket number 0638, Council Murphy for Council Jackson offered the following order...
Council Jackson moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0638. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Docket 0638 has passed.
Docket number 0639, Council Murphy for Council Jackson...
Council Jackson moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0639. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Docket 0639 has passed.
Docket number 0640, Council Murphy for Council O'Malley...
Council O'Malley moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0640. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Docket 0640 has passed.
Docket number 0641, Council Murphy offered the following order for the appointment of temporary employees in the City Council...
Council Lamatina moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0641. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Docket 0641 has passed. A clerk informs me there is one late-filed matter in her hands, which in an absence of objection will be added to today's agenda. Hearing, no objection. The matter is so added, the clerk will read the first addition to the agenda.
Council Stephen J. Murphy for Council Presley ordered that effective...
Council Presley moves suspension of the rules and passage of the personnel order. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. The late-filed personnel order has passed. Anybody wishing to remove a matter from the green sheets may do so at this time. Chair recognizes Council Bill Linehan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to pull a matter from the green sheets on page 2 of 10, docket number 0109 and 0111.
Page 2 of 10, Madam Clerk. Would you read both dockets that are...
In the Committee on Economic Development and Planning, docket 0109, offered by the mayor, order declaring vacant parcel of land acquired by the COB as surplus and transferring care, custody, management, and control of said property to the Public Facilities Commission. In the Committee on Economic Development and Planning, docket number 0111, offered by the mayor, by the mayor, messaged in order to declare surplus 790 Parker Street, 792 Parker Street, 794 Parker Street, containing approximately 12,269 square feet, city-owned property, and to transfer the care, custody, and management and control of said property to the Public Facilities Commission for sale or lease under terms and conditions deemed by the commission to be most appropriate for the COB.
Chair recognizes Councilor Bill Linehan on dockets 0109 and 0111.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had a, we held a hearing on this matter. I think it wasn't this week, it was last week or shortly before that. And these two matters, and this is something that's been on our docket for, since 2009. These matters have been vetted in the community for a long time, and we had a quality hearing. Both Director of DND Sheila Dillon and John Furbah were here. They took questions from myself and Councilor Ross, and so I ask that these matters are to pass.
Thank you, Council Linehan. Chair recognizes Councilor Mike Ross.
Thank you, Mr. President. We've sent along a letter from the Department of Neighborhood Development that I've passed out to my colleagues, to all the residents who have participated in this process, as well as all the residents who put their name on a petition that some of you might have heard about or seen. This is a good deal for the city of Boston, and this is a good deal for the residents of Mission Hill. If it wasn't, I would never, ever support it. We spent a long time with the Department of Neighborhood Development, making sure that what was put forward was something that the community could support. In just very brief overview of what this will do, it will take vacant land that's on Parker Street and Terrace Street in Mission Hill. Some of that land may be brownfield land, may be dirty fields, dirty land. But nonetheless, part of that land today has a community garden on the corner. It's an unofficial community garden, but it's been a community garden for many years, and residents use it. This will allow us to take that area, take that community garden, rebuild it, add water to it and other infrastructure, and make sure that the soil is clean and that the food that's being grown out of that is healthy. They'll take the art park, which is shrouded in trees and darkened a second you look into it. It's very hard to see the back of and not a safe place and a place of attacks that have occurred in our community, and it will rebuild it and make it an art park that is spread throughout this development. The community garden will be expanded in size. The art park will be reduced in size. There will then be three triple-deckers on Park Street that will be built, that are built with the latest in energy efficiency. And then there'll be a project on Terrace Street, which will contain 35 units at the very most of space, but may not be building, may not be housing, could actually be light industrial, which is what it's currently zoned for. We won't know what's going to be built there until the RFP that's out on the street right now comes back. There are prohibitions in this RFP that do not allow undergraduate student housing to be built in this site, because the community of Mission Hill has more than enough off-campus undergraduate student housing that it needs. There'll be other things that this project does. It will take an area of Mission Hill that is empty with city of Boston lots and make better use of it. Now, one of our residents who is, who loves her community and is dedicated and shows up at meetings and is here today disagrees with this, and I respect that. She's been in Mission Hill longer than I have. This resident, however, continues to sue the city of Boston on almost any project that comes along. And so, you have received a petition that was drafted by this individual that was incorrectly written with glaring omissions and glaring inconsistencies. And in the letter, it goes through statements that are made in this petition that are just, frankly, plainly inaccurate. If I received this petition and believed every word to be true in the petition, I would sign the petition. We are not building what the petition says we are building. We are not taking parkland and not restoring it like the petition insinuates, and we are not allowing dirty land to remain on the site. Now, we pulled back last week because it was actually incorrectly written. As Councilor Jackson pointed out, it was written, it didn't have Mission Hill written. I think it had JP or something written, so we rewrote it. It also afforded us a little bit of opportunity and a little bit of time to message the people I serve, to say, to find out, to get to the bottom of just how concerned they are. I mean, after all, we didn't just put this forward on the city council without having done the work in the community. And the reality is, before we put it forward, most everyone was okay. So, something changed between that period and today, and that was this petition that was incorrectly written. The community, the person who wrote the petition, all of us, will have another opportunity to participate in whatever goes there. And in the end, hopefully, something will be built. It's a very good chance that there's another lawsuit, but I do not think that we could have done anything that wouldn't, that would have prevented that lawsuit. I don't, because of the past experience. We've got great projects. Some of you, all of you have been to Mission Hill. You know some of the great work we've done there. The projects you talk about and love so much have all been under the same threat of suit. We need to move forward. These are good projects, and I hope my colleagues will support it today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just rise briefly to close this. The issue about, we've vetted the nomenclature that was related to whether it was Jamaica Plain Mission Hill or West Roxbury, and it was actually the plot numbers related to the sites that were significant legally. So, this all works as it's presented. And also, I want to just let the colleagues know, this thing has been in my committee since 2009, and that it comes up, it had come up each year and was moved forward. And until the district city councilor in that area had felt he had vetted it fully with the community in a way in which that he was satisfied, did it get moved forward. So, I just want to let you all know that and that, you know, I think the matter should be moved now. And thank you.
At this time, moves suspension of the rules and passage of dockets 0109 and 0111. All those in favor, say aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it. Dockets 0109 and 0111 have passed. Anybody else wishing to remove a matter from the green sheets may do so at this time. Additions to the consent agenda, there is one late-filed matter, which in absence of objection will be added to today's consent agenda. Seeing and hearing no objection, the matter is so added. Chair moves adoption of the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it. Consent agenda has been adopted. I'm asking all councilors and all guests to please rise at this time as the council prepares to adjourn. Chair recognizes Councilor Charles Yancey.
Thank you, Mr. President. You have a Mr. Consent to make a very brief statement.
Please proceed, Councilor Yancey.
Mr. President, I guess we'd like to welcome Daisy De La Rosa, our new staff director. I believe this is her very first meeting since we officially brought her on board. She brings great enthusiasm and leadership as our new staff director. I just want to formally welcome her to the Boston. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Yancey, for once again usurping the duties of the president of the city council. Chair recognizes Councilor Mike Ross.
You have a Mr. Consent to make a statement.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm sorry, I meant to just tell my colleagues that there's a copy that we passed around. It's a letter for the Boston Arts Academy to the School Building Assistance Program under the treasurer of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I want to thank my colleagues for signing on to it. Many of you have been contacted by the Boston Arts Academy. They were denied funding for the repairs that were needed in their, for their schools so that they can move forward as a, as a high school and grow as they've come in and talked to us. And so, I've asked the school building assistants, along with you, to take a second look at this. You know, sometimes the rules that are written for urban communities are tougher for Boston because we don't have the same amount of space, and we don't have giant playing fields, and we don't have, you know, the same that, you know, a lot of the other communities of Massachusetts have. So, when we write, you know, when we go to the school building assistants, it's almost like the chips are stacked against us before we even get there. So, it's no wonder that a lot of the, you know, proposals that go before them from Boston and from other urban communities similarly situated have a harder time getting passed. So, we ask them to consider that, as well as the legacy of the Boston Arts Academy, what it means to our community. So, to extend, any of you have the ability to continue to advocate, I know many of you are already, please do so. It's important that the Boston Arts Academy gets funded. Otherwise, you know, what's in jeopardy is the future of that great institution. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Ross. As we adjourn this week's memory, we will do so in memory of the following individuals for the Chair and Councilor Siomo, Virginia M. Oats, Cleolia B. Colorosi for Councilor Siomo, Robert J. Renzi for Councilor Presley, Bikila Alimu for Councilor Yancey, Martha Alston, and for Councilor Connolly, Callie Hunt. Moment of silence for those individuals. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns, it will do so in memory of the aforementioned and is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, April 10, 2013, at 12:00 noon. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye. Council stands adjourned.